All right. Today is January 9th, 2020. It is now 6:06 PM. And I'm convening a meeting of the Board of Education. As always, at these meetings, we begin with an act of reverence and the pledge to the allegiance. As always, I try to look for the youngs. We don't have any young people in here today. I mean, really young people today. So why don't we ask one of our newer members to do the pledge? Commissioner Adams, would you be willing to do the pledge? No? All right. Commissioner Malloy? All right. Everybody, ready?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Don't want Commissioner Malloy to take offense. I work alphabetically, so your last name was Adams, so I went with you. All right. So I would like to have a moment of silence. It's very easy to look at the headlines and watch TV and find some folks who are in need of prayer and support. The obvious one for me is our loved ones and federal citizens in Puerto Rico. It just seems that tragedy, national tragedies, natural tragedies continue to plague that country. And they will, I know, remain in our prayers whether we're at a school board meeting or not. But I would ask that you direct your energy, your prayers, your thoughts to folks in Puerto Rico or anybody who you know is struggling, because the Lord knows they and others need our support and prayers. I should also mention, this entire nation needs our prayers. We are, as you all know, in the midst of significant struggles with another country or countries. And we have loved ones, many of us have loved ones who wear the uniform and do what they are ordered and do what they feel right to protect this country and our interests. But we should not forget that there are other people who don't wear the American flag but are equally committed to their cause, their concern, most importantly, to their families. And they are too, are making sacrifices, so we should turn our thoughts and prayers to them as well. So on to the business of the Board of Education. There are no minutes, so there's no minutes to be approved. We do have speakers, five of them. And we'll begin with Jack Pelts. Mr. Pelts, if you want to take that podium right there to my left, you can pull the microphone close to you. And as you know, I'm sure our staff has told you, you have three minutes. And when the three minutes expire, that little egg timer bell will beep. Go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
So my name is Jack Pelts, and I'm the parent of a seventh grader at School of the Arts, a licensed clinical psychologist and professor at Damon College in Buffalo. And I conduct research on sleep. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you, especially after your marathon session last month. I really appreciate your attention. So the topic I'd like to address is school start times. Approximately 90% of high schoolers get either insufficient sleep during school nights or barely meet the required amount of sleep expected for healthy functioning. In fact, sleep problems and insufficient sleep are so pervasive for adolescents, they could be considered an epidemic due to their adverse impact on adolescent mental and physical health. One of the worst parts about this is that teenagers' lack of sleep is largely not a result of their own making. Yes, teenagers need better sleep habits. Their parents could do more to perhaps enforce bedtime, but the biological changes in teens' bodies and brains associated with puberty result in a shift in their circadian rhythms. Essentially, they biologically shift to go to bed later, to wake up later. It's a natural biological process. Unfortunately, the arbitrary nature of school start times does not shift along with them. This results in their sleep deprivation. So in this light, addressing insufficient sleep in adolescents represents a critical point of intervention. There's a growing body of evidence that suggests that later school start times, 8:30 a.m. or later, as recommended by the American Academy of Pediatricians, conveys multiple benefits on adolescents, including improved sleep, better mental and physical health, and improved academic outcomes. That's the good news. And there's been about 14% of high schools across the nation that have shifted their school start times to 8:30 or later. They've seen improvements across the board in their students. For instance, in a study of 9,000 students in grades nine through 12 in schools across the district, greater sleep duration was associated with fewer reports of various mental health and substance use-related issues. Other studies have found later school start times associated with better academic outcomes, including better grades, fewer absences, and better graduation rates. So it's well-known that school start times are impacted by many factors, including school administrators, athletic coaches, parents, and perhaps most directly, R C S D. And R C S D is transportation. It's incredibly complicated puzzle to solve, but in considering this opportunity, you might be able to improve the district's financial situation. So I'm referring to R T S's contract, R C S D's contract with R T S. I know that there are considerations when it comes to schools' transportation. In fact, I encourage everyone to review the efficiency study of the Rochester City School District Pupil Transportation Program completed in September of 2017. Although this report does not directly speak to school start times and renegotiating this contract, it will be possible to implement changes to transportation related to school start times. Given the well-documented benefits of delaying school start times, which again, not only decrease substance use, automobile accidents, aggression, but also improved academic performance as well as better mental and physical health, I would hope that you would keep this issue in mind as you consider the future of transportation in the district. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pelts, do you have a copy of your remarks?
Yes, I do.
If you wouldn't mind, if you could leave them with the clerks, so this way every board member could read your remarks.
Gladly.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, one personal privilege.
Sure.
Mr. Pelts, my son is also a student at SODA and has been pestering me to raise this very issue. And I want to suggest to you that your child connect with my child and make it a student government issue.
I think it's great. I think the students certainly have a lot of sway. And we saw that happen last month in their vibrant voices. But it is a larger issue, something that I think the district, parents, coaches, administrators need to take on. It behooves me that SODA actually moved its start time up a few years ago to earlier despite all the prevailing literature. And so I ask that to sort of keep in mind, you know, the kids are my priority and that certainly this is something that, you know, we can address.
So I want to apologize to my colleagues and with all due respect to my colleague, Commissioner Powell, who I have a great degree of admiration for. This is exactly why we don't exchange with people because, and no offense to you certainly, Mr. Pelts, our policy is to let citizens make their remarks.
I would just ask that he seek out my email address and we'll.
Sure. Gladly. Thank you.
Absolutely. That typically does often happen. Sometimes we'll have staff members reach out to people. But the reason why, for everybody else, certainly not to you, Mr. Pelts, the reason why we don't do this is these could be very good but lengthy conversations, and we reserve this time to allow citizens to speak to us. So thank you very much.
I really appreciate it.
I apologize, Commissioner Powell, for using you as an example, but that is the reason why we don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right. You have a nice evening. Rebecca Heatherington?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Heatherington, and I'm the mother of Robert and Isaac, who are two of the 300 students that are being educated at the Montessori Academy School 53. I wanted to address the board this evening, and I had hoped to see Superintendent Day that they could reauthorize the reinstatement of two of our peer professionals that allowed for the continuation of the Montessori model for our primary level students and to advocate for the reinstatement of our coach. Without our coach, the school cannot maintain the fidelity of the model that is Montessori, which is an environment where educators teach school, teach educators, students teach students, and students and educators teach each other. The Montessori school receives no money to train our teachers in Montessori. So the coach has been a workaround, and a really fantastic one, that highlights some of the best aspects of Montessori philosophy in education. In speaking to people associated with the district over the last month, I've realized, I've come to realize that there isn't a lot of understanding on what constitutes a Montessori philosophy. So instead of telling you about it here, I have a handout that I'll give to you at the end that just gives you a quick overview of what Montessori is, a really short history on it, and how it amazingly pairs with the needs of our C S D students. On the back is a short synopsis of a peer-reviewed study that talks about Montessori's impact on closing the income inequality gap, which is a huge issue in the city of Rochester. You should not be downsizing Montessori by eliminating our coach. You should be doubling it in a district that is desperate for the kind of growth and nurturing that Montessori provides. By asking you to do this, I am also taking a personal risk. Our coach is now my four-year-old's teacher as his Montessori-certified teacher was displaced out of our building. Our coach is incredible with our students, with my son, but the viability of the school is at stake. There are so many things that I wanted to say today about how teachers and professionals are struggling to meet the demands of what this cut has done to their relationship with the district and how the symbolism of it all hangs very heavy. But I would be remiss if I didn't share an anecdote from this afternoon, which will illustrate the impact to your students. My first grader was not directly impacted by the cuts, other than a few students from a dissolved classroom had been added to his class. His teacher went out for a family emergency, and the class was told that she would be gone a while. They meant she will be back next Tuesday, but my son interpreted that she'd be gone forever. And as this sunk in this afternoon, over the phone, I could feel his panic and his worry, and I called the school, and things were cleared up for me and for him. But I know that panic, and it was not a feeling I ever wanted my small children to feel, especially not handed to them by his school, one of his favorite places in the entire world. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Susie Gutierrez? I know I probably mispronounced that, so you'll help me when you take the mic.
Good evening. I'm Susie Saider Gutierrez. Good evening. Good evening. My child is a first grader at School 12, and my husband teaches at East. This could have been a different story here in January 2020 in the Rochester City School District. In December, we heard in this very room from students, parents, teachers, and staff members and community members who described the mid-year staff reductions as unconscionable, destructive, abominable, reckless, and frankly, unoriginal. We heard about the immediate effects removing teachers from classrooms at the holidays would have, trauma-induced effects in, as just mentioned, some of these children's favorite places. And there are so many questions that we have. How can a district reinstate a position or a teacher on a Friday, January 3rd? Where did that money come from? And then remove a different teacher or a position on Monday, January 6th? I call forth to the outside New York State auditors that we don't want any more silence from you. We want you to investigate not just what happened in the last calendar year, but this moment and the mismanagement that's going on right now, that's pulling the heartstrings of teachers, of administrators, of students, of families, who have heartbroken children and who have people who did not need to be in this position, principals whose schools were changing their culture in the right direction, where unsurpassed collaboration was becoming a reality. At School 12, we have a change of leadership this year. Our plan was being, had a lot of forward motion, and that all is scrapped now, obviously. So this new classroom year, like, it's a new year. It's like September, but it's so close. It's almost like that uncanny valley for the children where things are so different but kind of the same. And what we need is some school-based, trauma-informed transition training. So I have a question for all of the commissioners. I have two questions. By a show of fingers, how many schools have you been into this week to support?
Ma'am, as I indicated even before you came up here, so this is, don't take this personally. This is not a time for us to interact. You can, of course, you have our email address, our phone numbers. I've seen you around, I've obviously talked to your husband. This is not the time to do that, because it would begin a dialogue that we couldn't possibly finish.
Great. You can think about these questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And the need for trauma-informed transition training, how far have we gotten on that? Where was the plan? On December 19th, you had the choice to hear and not just listen to the students this district purports to serve, even offering innovative and heartfelt ideas on how to close the budget gap, for example, sacrificing their summer school because it's up to high schoolers to pay attention and get good grades so that elementary school children could keep their reading teachers, as a small example. I would like the future to begin again now. There will be more staff reductions that are proposed that cross your desks. Please do the work that you are called to do to make sure that the budget money is available so that we can have the consistency of staffing that our children deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sean Carroll?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Sean Carroll. I've been here previously before, beginning of the school year in September. I come probably a couple of times a year.
Pull the mic a little bit closer to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I probably need the mic down. I'm here today to discuss something that I discussed with a board member that was previous year and one of your superintendents of your high school. I have proposed, and I think this is appropriate now to bring up. I have proposed with the teachers, people talk about the tenure and, you know, with the teachers and how to evaluate them. Most corporations do go by seniority a lot of times, but they also take in a factor of people's performance. And I think that should also be with the teachers also, performance-based plus seniority, because basically that's what it is. The tenure is there. Teachers feel comfortable once they get tenure, and they should be to a certain level. But I have suggested that each, every three years, once a teacher is in the school system, basically about five or six years, we should, teachers should also be evaluated after the school year and see how much knowledge they have retained. And there are web-based programs that are out there to evaluate teachers on. So they can come, what, after the Fourth of July, the mid-year, mid-year in July, two weeks before school. It would be probably on a rotating basis. I probably can't get all the teachers to do it, but I would basically on a rotating basis, and it'll probably depend upon the superintendent or the principal of that school to see who gets evaluated. I would assume all teachers would get evaluated sometime within, with a one to two, the three-year timeframe, because I know it's a lot of teachers. But teachers do need to be evaluated and see how much they do retain and see how much, even for themselves, because some teachers need to be honest with themselves, what they need to work on with themselves, not just, well, definitely in a classroom and relating to students, because sometimes teachers may have a vast knowledge of a different subject, but they, sometimes they don't know how to relate it to the students. So there are web-based programs that are out there. But I also like to say that principals need to definitely evaluate their teachers. I don't know how that is going about. I would like to speak to one of the principal or the superintendent on that. And I would just like to say, only because if the teachers or, I mean, excuse me, the principal or the superintendent are going to each class that their teachers are in, every quarter, evaluating that teacher and seeing how the classrooms are being structured, and especially if you have a class that is being a low performance, especially if you notice each year, especially with a certain teacher, say if it's a third or second grade teacher or fifth or fourth grade teacher, that those students aren't performing well.
Ma'am?
I know.
Okay.
I know. My time is up.
No, that's all.
But I do like to express that. And I have, like I said, I have gotten with one of the superintendent and one of the former, what do I want to say, board members that was here on certain subjects. And I would like to continue our conversation on that. But I also like to commend the students and, and I do apologize.
No, 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 no need to apologize.
Apologize. I will mention this later on the level board.
Okay. You're welcome to come back. And as you already have indicated, there are ways to reach folks offline. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Kristin French?
Hello, I'm Kristin French. First, I'd like to acknowledge the board for allowing all the speakers that wanted to speak last month to. that wanted to speak last month to have the opportunity to do so, which reflects the potential desires that you have for all the public to participate in the democratic process. Upon reflection, I now realize the vote for the staff reduction plan, I mean, not the plan, that's an inaccurate word, resolution, was not truly democratic. If the voice of the RCSD community was heard, then the resolution would have been tabled. On January 2nd, following the swearing-ins, the public witnessed how the allegarchy continues to fester. A powerful few controlling the direction of our district instead of responding to the will of the Rochester community. This leads me to Mr. Dade's email and letter to the RCSD staff and separately to those that were laid off. They were grossly inaccurate and vague and attempted to ignore the chaotic aftermath of this administration's extremely poor planning ability to prepare for the real possibilities of letting go and carelessly moving around hundreds of staff. Actually, the correspondence was counterproductive despite his intentions because it radiated with the mentality of suck it up buttercup and further highlighted the lack of true humanity and collaborative leadership he often claims to uphold. Please listen carefully as I share a brief summary of the adverse impacts this resolution has had on the RCSD family that no glittery star sticker can cover up. Displaced staff were told to check their email throughout their break. Some of them were on pre-planned family vacations to learn their displacement. But when no correspondence was received, they called CO and there was no response for several days or no response at all. Some teachers were finally told on Sunday evening where they would be Monday, and some are still waiting to hear. Displaced teachers being told one day that they were assigned to a particular school, setting up their spaces, planning with their teaching partners, only to find out a day later that there'd be a completely, completely different school or back to their original school. Primary teachers packing up their personal supplies like fat crayons and miniature scissors, displaced to upper grades and given bare minimum or no budget for supplies. Staff unable to get to their new assigned school because they previously carpooled, walked, or followed a particular bus schedule, and they no longer had those as options. Staff without childcare for their own children because of a school time change of an hour and a half earlier or later. Staff entering their schools with no schedule or roster, no key to their classroom or bathroom, badges not working to the doors or copiers, and rooms filled with trash, old curriculum, or their previous teacher's belongings. Paras and TAs forced to leave to high school where they built relationships with students over years till an elementary and vice versa, others asked to go from kindergarten to middle school. There has been students forced into different classrooms due to lack of teaching staff. There has been unexpected pay reductions for many resulting in a loss of hundreds of dollars. Nowhere in Mr. Dade's welcome back message did he acknowledge any of these hardships of what the RCSD employees and students would be facing. Despite his hopes, there are many experiencing anxiety, panic attacks, lack of sleep, high blood pressure, and symptoms of depression due to failure of this administration's plan. Much of what I listed could have been avoided if staff were included on how the displacement process could go. Perhaps the value of unsurpassed collaboration is suffocating under a rock instead of actually being one.
Ma'am, if you'd like to leave a copy of your remarks with the clerk or deliver them later, I don't know if that's a draft, but we'd be more than welcome to distribute them to board members. All right? That's fine. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is advisory reports. There are none today. The clerk tells me. The next item on the agenda is committee reports. I'll begin with you, Commissioner Powell. Any report?
No, no committee reports either.
Oh, no, no committee reports either? Okay. We did have a policy committee meeting, but.
We normally do the reports at the district meeting.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you.
That was my error.
Oh, no, no, no worries. No worries. All right. So then, Dr. Nelms, the floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy New Year. I just want to start by think, by, uh... Here we go. There we go. Just welcoming the new board members, Commissioners Adams and Malloy. Welcome to, welcome to the board. And look forward to working with each of you and the work we're doing as a district in the East. And I also want to congratulate Board President, Vice President White and Elliott as well for being reelected. Looking forward to a productive and positive year ahead. I also want to take some time to, to thank President Sarah Mangelsdorf from the University of Rochester. Although she is new to the area, she has been incredibly hands-on about the East project. We've probably met 10 times and at her office, or she's been to East. She was there for opening day. And when she was approached with the fiscal realities of the district, I asked her what else could, could the U of R do. I think many of you know that the Board of Trustees and some of their foundations have raised nearly a million dollars for kids at East over the last five years to go on eighth-grade trip and arts camps and music camps and to put them on college campuses for three or four weeks over the summer. They've done a ton of things in kind through the University of Rochester to support the kids at East for all activities that the school cannot afford. And I think you all are fully aware of that over the last five years. But I asked her to continue considering some of the budgetary cuts moving forward as permanent cuts to this project. And for those who remember, in year one, the U of R and some of the support they had was, was around between $850,000 and $900,000, I believe. And this past year, that was reduced to $500,000. And the U of R was able to reduce that by an additional $263,000 from this point moving forward while also maintaining the programs and services that they provide. So I want to just thank President Mangelsdorf publicly and to the University of Rochester for finding the funds to support the academic planning at East and to continue that work moving forward and for their generosity to continue to, to, to support this cause. What people don't realize is that the University of Rochester functions as a non-for-profit. And so it's not, people talk about this endowment that they have, but it's not as if they can give money away freely to individuals. It's that money is paid for through tuition, and there are certain things they have to cover and the cost for. So I know often people think U of R is this cash cow, but when they are giving funds away in the community, it is very limited in what they can and cannot do. And so this is the president, President Mangelsdorf, trying to utilize her own internal resources to help support a school in the city. And I look forward to expanding that support to other schools. So thank you, Sarah, and to the university board trustees for approving this funding reduction. I also want to remind the community that this is region's preparation time. We have exams coming up this January and then again in June. It's very important, parents and students, and talking to you directly across the district, to take advantage of all of the region's review and exam preparation courses that our schools offer. There are also plenty of supports in the community, at the libraries, and at different non-for-profits. It's extremely important that kids prepare, particularly those who failed exams last year and may not be sitting in the course this year, to get some of those refreshers done before the January exam is vital for your graduation success. I want to be, one of our, our key initiatives is to support our bilingual student population, particularly our Spanish-dominated population. And I want to thank Ibero for helping us restructure what we're doing in chemistry and social studies along with our teaching staff and teacher leaders, because that was a cohort of students who historically saw their graduation rates declining. And I'm really proud to say that at East this past year, our bilingual students had one of the lowest dropout rates and one of the highest graduation rates within that last year's cohort. So the work that we're doing to support that, that targeted population is working. So thank you for our partners at Ibero and for our teacher leaders at East who are strengthening our bilingual program led by Assistant Principal Mike Nitz Perez and Michelle Saedic. I also want to remind students that Saturday School, again, is upon, is upon us. And this supports also our students who are learning English for the first time or second language learners, our ENL, ELL students. We have community supports for you also. Through a partnership with WDKX and Jazzy T, again, I invite the board for the next five weeks on Saturday, I believe it's at 10 o'clock, 10 or 11 o'clock. It's all over DKX. We get folks together, our community is just for the adults, grandparents, parents, cousins, play cousins, to come together and, and hustle for health. What they do, they learn a bunch of line dancing and they get fit leading into the spring. It is, I think last week we had 20 individuals come. We have room for another 15 or 20 or so. So if you have nothing, like, nothing to do, you want to come on out, I encourage you to come out for Hustle for Health. It's very similar to, DKX did this back in the day with, was it Lady T? Did this back in the day? You said, I do workouts in the morning, but it's very similar to that, but it's line dancing. And Jazzy T, who works with DKX, is doing this work for us for the next five weeks. It's a great partnership. Today, thank those board members who could attend. I know some of you had work-related events that you could not attend, so thank you for responding. Also, today was an incredible day with Dr. Jason Willis for our Director of African and Pan-African-American History here, Sean Dunn-Woody, a local artist. We had ended two students who actually helped paint and sand these, these structures. One student is, was a former East student who's now at School of the Arts. And we have a high school senior at East as well who helped Sean Dunn-Woody as their, as his apprentices to do this work. It was an incredible event. I saw Commissioner Shepherd and Malloy there. It is, it's, it's better to see it in person. And what Sean did was he took the, the book, The Eyes Are Watching God, and we identified at this point 26 different individuals, both from Rochester and from national or international fame, and painted pictures of their eyes within the courtyard as a symbolic gesture for the past, present, and the future. There will be additional panels that will be added. There will be a process for that with Dr. Willis. So this is not an all-inclusive list, but these are some of the names that our students, our students mentioned. These are our parent, our PTA recommended names and then some local community members. So again, it's not, it was intended to be an all-inclusive list. It was to honor the voices of those who participated in this process, but we will continue to add to that. And so there is a video embedded in this that explains the lead-up to the event. And you'll see some of the panels being displayed at that time. So if we hit play, I think it's embedded in the picture. Can you press play? It's embedded in the picture.
Press play.
The video is embedded in the picture. Thanks.
The name's Sean Dunn-Woody. You're here in my studio. It is in these winter months as we stay bonded up. I'm working on the Eyes Project. It hasn't been, hasn't had its full title yet, but it's kind of based on Zolimia Person, The Eyes Are Watching God. And what we did was we took information from East High students and East High community members to ask, who would be some of the individuals you would like to see around you and see the connection between your movements forward ahead in your life and how those individuals connect? And then we'll be going into the East High courtyard so that we can have a gathering place to really discuss these individuals in the curriculum who actually becomes this artwork, actually becomes part of the curriculum.
Spent a lot of time skipping these halls and running around and acting cool. Didn't think I'd ever be back installing artwork and getting kicked out of class and everything.
There'll be a long pit wall, two middle panels, two, two little bars there and two little bars on this side. You see one is already in place. No, I'm not, it's only the district is actually installing these pieces. So I don't know when they're going to do that, seeing as that, you know, Christmas is holiday time, how everything's going on. I don't know when they're going to get around to it, but I think they're going to be doing it sometime towards the end of this month or maybe tomorrow. I don't know when. The plan is to have everything up for a January unveiling, I believe it is.
So first of all, Tom, really grateful. Thank you so much for being around here. Really feel a lot of power when we have district allies such as Tom and his crew to come in. If you could talk to Tom just for a moment about some of the things and considerations with a project like this from a building-based and a project-based perspective?
Well, the good part to us is we just got through replacing all these exterior panes throughout the building as part of the modernization effort. And of course, applying these pieces of iron, we wanted to make sure it was done in such a way that it didn't jeopardize the water integrity, waterproof integrity of the existing panels. So we spent a lot of time coming up with the actual attachment mechanism, how we would do it without actually damaging the existing building and also protecting the waterproofing.
So we amassed 28 names of individuals whose portraits they would like to see of these up, up close, in-depth portraits in their eyes. So when one looks at these eyes, they can see themselves. We've been working on this project now for about a year, making sure we get everything together, all the pieces and parts and all the strong families and engage in this process. And it's been a wonderful project to be working on with so many great hands and so many great minds wanting to move this forward. And I can't wait to see, no pun intended, how this all plays out when it's installed.
Thank you. And so all students are going to do a project where we, they honor the ancestors before them and are making a visual representation of the eyes. And that'll be, it's a school-wide project. And then at the high school level, the students are reading the actual book and some may watch the movie. But it was, it was a really involved project. We involved all the parent, all the students through our family group, which is a time of day that the students are working collectively and collaboratively. We used our parent group or the FACE Committee to get, to get some input on who also should be selected and then some community members also. So it's a, it was a really involved process. It came together. I want to thank Mike Schmidt, Tom Kase, and his crew for working over the, the winter break to get these things up. The question you might be asking is how do we, how did he do this and what type of material? It is decking material, so it's already weatherproofed. And then the paint itself is also weatherproofed. So he will go back out this spring and will keep checking to make sure the surfaces are okay. And, and it'll be a permanent display and there'll be additional folks added in the, in the future. So, thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Yes.
I'll begin down to my left. Commissioner Shepherd.
So for the region's prep review, I would like to know how many students participate in it when it is all over? And then for Saturday School, what are the different reasons that students are attending Saturday School since there's only about 15 to 25?
So there are, so there are two Saturday Schools. I should have been more clear about that. There's a Saturday School for middle school students also that those students are, are kids who have not done well the first semester. We want to make sure, primarily eighth graders, to make sure they get themselves in the right academic mind frame, mindset before they go into high school. And so this time of year, we're looking at the transition between eighth and ninth grade. You know, we're fortunate enough to have the kids six through eighth. And so we really start to focus on eighth graders now before they enter ninth grade. So that's where you see a lot of the Saturday School for lower school. And the region's prep is primarily for high school unless there are eighth graders who are challenging the US History Exam, which would be a very small number. So Saturday School is primarily for lower school students and the region's prep is primarily for high school. I should have been more clear about that. Thanks.
Yeah. And then, so I'll put on the question log because I want to know how many are lower school and upper school?
Yep. And then how many students attended in, as a whole? I will also do is I will, I will ask, we do this anyways. I'll ask to see other students who attended, how many of them were successful in the region's examinations? And then I'll also try to include what their academic performance was prior to. I mean, you can't make up a, if you had straight ass from, you know, September to December, won't change your GPA, but at least we'll know of those kids, how many are attending and getting prepared for, for the exams.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah. So back to the budget update, slide number four. Can you just explain these numbers a little bit further for me? So the reduction in the U of R contract, the original 2019-20 contract and the reduced amount and the adjusted amount. And then in addition to that explanation, I did want to understand where the total reduction that we had asked for or that I asked for on this board, I don't know if the other, we had to vote on this, but there were discussions about you guys doing. I asked for five. I know it was discussed one to two million reduction. So I'll start there and then I have one more regarding, a follow-up to that.
Okay, great. All right. So the first question would be the reduction on slide four. So the contract for the U of R this year is for $514,000.
Was what you guys reduced?
That was the total amount for this year's contract. So that was from September, well, from July 1 to, to the end of June. That contract is being reduced by $263,000. So that, essentially that contract is being amended to reflect $250,000.
So it was originally going to be cut by 500, or a little over $500,000, but now it's, okay.
The original contract for this school year is $514,000 and some change. And the U of R decided they could absorb $263,000 of that contract. And so the total contract now would, is $250,300.
So we're paying $250,000 then to the U of R for services? But what about the total budget for East? Doesn't that incorporate this cause for the U of R? Isn't that part of the millions of dollars that East High School is getting is to have that collaboration with the U of R?
Correct. This is all within that budget, so reducing that budget. So this additional money will go on top of the $3 million that we've already given back.
I would like to actually see that in writing though. So that's going to be my second, I don't even know if that's going to be a question today. That may have to go on the board question log.
So I will say, there is, there is a, uh, so as I explained to the board previously, and I think in November and December, and maybe, um, October two, I think, it's about three million dollars that we have given back since July one in total. This is an additional two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And we're working with the district right now for additional, to move, uh, one point two million dollars from, uh, from our budget into title funds that we received as receivership school, and then free of those A-funds also. So we're actually closer to the two, to the five million dollar number that you requested previously, but we're not there because you requested it, it's because we've always given back a significant amount of money. Um, and so we continue to do that. What I've tried to do in my role is, is to secure as much, uh, funding from private donors and, and through grants as I can, and I think that record shows that. This U of R give-back is, um, is an example of some of the private funding that we're getting back from the University of Rochester. Um, the grant funds are our ability to move some things into title funds. And the reduction that you see from the U of R contracts and some of the grant funds is because, over the last four years, we've, um, funded our curriculum development. We've seen an increase in student graduation rates and, um, in attendance, and so some of those resources we needed in years one and two, we don't need now. And all that funding has been returned to, uh, the district as part of our overall budget. So to, I, to, so I can, I can bring back out the information that we provided in November, December, about the three million dollar calculation, we can resurface that. Um, and then this will just be in addition to that, and then the one point two million, we're working with the grants department to secure that funding also, and with Terry and, and, and his team.
So, so Sean, I hear you, and you and I, we have to have a separate conversation to further have conversations around the budget, 'cause, yes, I recall us having this conversation, but also recall stating that when you're returning money, you guys have it on your budget end, it's not budgeted for our other schools, and so we don't get that till the end of the year, and then there's no benefit for the rest of the schools, which would have been a critical time right now towards our deficit. So you and I can further have conversations about how we move forward for this budget cycle, because I think it is gonna be an intense budget cycle, and East will not be escaping the consequences of the deficit, where other schools will have to face them too.
So I'll just repeat what I said before, just to, just re, well, restate what I said before. So the budget that we returned to this district has already been returned. So it's been, it was returned July one, the first round of that money, um, because we don't wanna hold the money, and that's a decision that we made prior to the budget, um, deficit situation. The additional funds that were, that were requested by Terry and his team was already returned once we got through this cycle. This two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is already, um, is in legal right now, I believe. That's going to, the contract is being reworked to be returned. So there's no escaping any budget deficit. We've actually helped the budget, this, this, the district for the last four years, we are part of the district. Um, there hasn't been any holding of, of funds. Um, let me just finish.
Okay.
Because, um, and, and the way in which that budget was handled was at the request of the previous CFO and the previous superintendent. That's how they, they, they wanted to do that. So we, every year, we, by the spring, will update, in the fall, then the spring, and update where we anticipate, um, uh, our fund balance being, and we return that, and it's always been made available, it's been completely transparent. So I, I don't wanna have people hear the word, um, escape the crisis and be misled. We have sacrificed, every year, we continue to sacrifice, those funds are available. We've worked very, um, close with Terry, the finance department, the grants department, and, and we're actually working really well together. So I think even internally, they would, they would, um, also speak, um, to the sacrifices that we're all making as a, as a district to, to help with this budget. Um, and so I, I would just say, I, I know the word escape is probably on responding to, um, but, but I, I think it's important, and I want the community to think that for some reason, East is not being impacted. We also, um, were impacted by teacher layoffs, we were impacted by disruption of classroom environments, and, uh, and we took it like every other school, and we're trying to make the best of that situation. So we have not escaped anything. Uh, most of our impacts have been through grant funds and private funds, and we return as much as we can every year to the district, and it has been available for other schools.
So in response to that, though, you did just mention our previous superintendent had a different setup than the current one, and how that funding was returned. And so that did have an impact, although I appreciate that the new superintendent and yourself have a different system than what was in place before in terms of returning that funding. So I'm still going to request, um, to see that detail of Marisol on the board officially, to see how that money was returned, and on the district's end, this is for Terry and his staff, how that money was then utilized and reincorporated into our budget.
Um, Marisol, I think that those numbers were provided in December and November budget presentations, those details. Now, the details of how they went, whether, how they use is not, but it's just for you to look.
All right, so, so those questions will be put on the question log for every board member to see, and the answers will be available to every board member. Commissioner Adams, you have any questions? All right. Vice President Elliott?
No.
I'm just working my way down.
No.
Commissioner Malloy?
So just a quick question, just in terms of the region's, uh, prep review that's offered. Um, I, I would like to know the number of students who are served, uh, by that. I also, and this isn't something maybe that you could answer, but I, I do wonder, do we have similar course of regions prep, regions prep opportunities for our other students in other high schools, so our non-East EPO students? I'd like to, and so this isn't a question for you per se, but, uh, I, I'm worried more about the equity piece. Um, I'd like to make sure that all of our students are being provided, like, those types of opportunities. So I, I would be interested to know, like, um, if we're offering the same thing for non-East students.
Madam Clerk, that would be something I would put on the question log. Did you hear that question? Got it? Okay. Commissioner Powell?
No.
And, and mine is a comment and a question. Um, last year, or actually predicted for the last cohort, that the graduation rate was sixty-nine point...
Six.
August, sixty-nine point six.
Mm-huh.
Um, that's sort of a thirty percentage point increase from when you started.
Thirty-six point six.
Yeah. Um, my question is, uh, I, I put on the question log, I asked our superintendent to make sure that post-regions, uh, and they've, they've gotten very, very good at this over the years, that they give us an update with respect to what they project based on the most recent region's exams, which you indicated were coming. And I don't think I sent a similar request to you, maybe I did, probably not, but could you make sure?
I know, I knew it was coming, though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Could you, could you just make sure that the entire board?
Yes.
Gets up, sort of, we, we're calling it now predictive analytics, we've gotten very good at this as a district, in predicting what our increase will be. Um, now, I, I anticipate, and I don't want to, but I anticipate that there may be some ripple effect from the mid-year cuts, because you would, you would at least expect there would be. But we can still monitor, uh, and manage our progress through the region's exam. So if you could provide that, uh, to our clerk, and she'll make sure the whole board gets it.
Yeah, well, after the renewed exams are given, I think it's a, uh, it was a third week, uh, third week in January?
Yeah.
And we take a week to grade those, we'll have a better idea of what that looks like.
Yep, that's exactly what we're talking about. Okay. All right, uh, Commissioner Malloy?
Just a follow-up to, to what you were saying, I didn't quite catch that number. What, what is the graduation rate at East right now?
Uh, as of August, it was sixty-nine point six. When we began, it was thirty-three point three. And when we arrived in September, because kids are not in the right classes, the highest graduate, grad rate they could have was nineteen percent.
Okay, all right. Um, next, any other questions? I think we're good. Any other, um, next item on the agenda is the EPO, uh, human resource resolutions. Can I get a, I, I'd like, well, let's take them one by one. Can I get a motion to discuss, uh, EPO Resolution 561?
Motion.
Been moved by Commissioner LeBron. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 561? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 561, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, uh, can I get a motion to discuss Resolution 568?
Motion.
Been moved by Commissioner LeBron. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding the, uh, Resolution 568?
Motion.
Been moved by Commissioner LeBron, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 570? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 570, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Let's next, uh, turn our attention to, um, human resource resolutions for the Rochester City School District. Can I get a motion to discuss Resolution 578?
Motion.
Been moved by Commissioner LeBron, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 578?
Yes, so same question that I just had for, um, Sean Gels, for Dr. Gels, I'm gonna have for our district, um, or the Rochester City School District, other, other schools, is why do we have a position being appointed as, as a new hire? So that position needs to be explained. When we're, my understanding is the district has a hiring freeze. Harry, you're on.
The purpose of this hire is, again, to support the socio-economical, uh, situations in our schools. The superintendent has met with, um, Chief, um, Turner, and felt that this position was warranted, that's why we're advancing this particular, uh, resolution. And, and again, I think as you recall, the superintendent indicated that all resolutions of hires would be approved by him before we submitted them to the board. So he has vetted this particular, uh, request, and that's why it's there.
Right, so, but my understanding, just again for the record, was that we had a hiring freeze. So I understand that he vetted it and approved it, but...
And, and, and again, I think with the caveat that like for special ed positions, we were authorized to go ahead and support, bring those forward as well.
Absolutely, special ed, I, I will support a hundred percent. But this position, for me, would not be something I would consider a critical position at this time, given the nature of the, where we're at financially.
I understand that.
So just, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, Commissioner Powell?
Safe to assume that this person is, uh, appointed from the callback list?
Uh, no, not this particular person. Again, these are what were considered to be, uh, business critical situat, but business critical positions, and that's the rationale.
Well, I'm just gonna have to ask a follow-up question. Did we not lay off any school counselors?
N, no, we did not. We did not.
I understand now, thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you can ask? Any other questions or comments? I, I would note, um, even though these are EPO nights, uh, and I appreciate, Mr. Kennedy, you providing the information you did, it would be helpful, um, in situations like this, to have someone, uh, who could speak beyond the human capital perspective. Um, I, I, I will take you at your word that this was a super-intense position, but I don't know who this could be. I guess I would just say to our clerk, please make sure that the administration has someone in addition to Mr. Kennedy, again, no offense intended, that could explain, provide a response, because I, I, in my business, we call this hearsay. I'll rely on that, but, um, it would be helpful. And, and so let me repeat, even though these are EPO nights, there should always be someone from the administration here who can speak from the superintendent's perspective, not necessarily the superintendent, but someone who could voice that. So any other questions or comments regarding, uh, Resolution 578? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 578, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Any no's? I heard, uh, Commissioner LeBron. Got that, Madam Clerk? All right, I need a motion to discuss Resolution 583. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, by Commissioner LeBron, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 583? Vice President Elliott?
Yes, um, um, Harry, can you tell us how long this grant funding is for?
Yes, um, the grant is for the end of the school year.
So, once these, once the grant, um, ends, um, these positions are no longer...
And it's possible that the grant will be extended as well. However, by making these moves and moving these people into grant-funded positions, it allowed us to recall teachers and to reduce our RIF counts, and to basically restore some of the buildings and reduce some of the, um, uh, things, the displacements that you've been hearing in the news and other places.
Well, I guess I'm a little sensitive to that response, Harry, in the sense that if these people are just moved, do they really understand, uh, the community-school model? And are they, can they have the kind of impact?
Yes.
Uh, that we need to have, um, in, in the school-community, um, framework?
Yes.
So I guess that, um, I, I would be, um, sensitive to have, you know, what, do they have the right qualifications that are needed in order to do the work?
So, and...
In this, in this...
Excellent question, um, Vice President Elliott. These individuals were interviewed, screened, and vetted way before the freeze took place, and as a result of the freeze, um, and the fact that these grant fundings became available, we saw it as an opportunity again to, because they were interviewed and screened by, um, Michelle Alberti and her team. And, and they met the qualifications, criteria, the job description, as, as defined by the community-school model. And again, it created us with an opportunity to, uh, reduce some of the RIF impact by making these moves.
Yeah, I guess I'm more concerned about, um, their effectiveness, um, in these, in these schools, in these positions. And, um, it, it's, it's, it's bringing me some concern that we have. And, you know, they may meet the technical qualifications, but do they meet, meet the community qualifications in the sense of to have an impact with the students and families within our community? Can they go within those communities and have an impact? That's my concern, so.
I understand.
Um, I would be interested in, in, in the future, having some conversations around, are they having the kind of, will they have the kind of impact in our schools with this community, uh, schools framework?
Okay.
And, uh, that, because you just can't put somebody in here just because they meet the technical qualifications, they gotta be able to work within our communities.
I, I totally understand.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Um, so I would like to know what the school assignments are for each of these individuals, and then also, um, were these, uh, okay, never mind, got that. And then, um, were these previous vacant positions, or were they, um, positions that were created in light of what has happened mid-year? Um, because I, I do kinda wanna know if the, if the need was actually there, or if we're just adding additional positions under this grant.
No, again, we're not adding additional positions under the grant. Grant is, um, a valid grant. Um, these, and as far as the locations, do you have that information as to where they're being, okay, established that? Um, but no, these were not just brought up just to bring people on. These were needed positions at these school buildings, and again, as I indicated, these applicants or these individuals were vetted through a, uh, interviewing process, uh, conducted by Michelle Alberti. And again, because it helped us to adjust our RIF numbers and put people back to work, we felt that this was the right thing to do.
Yeah, no, I get the explanation on getting people back to work, but I just wanted to know if they were vacant positions before the mid-year, um, plans had, had occurred in regards to employment.
To the best of my knowledge, these were grant-funded positions that came as a result of us re-looking at the grants that were available, and as a result of that, created us, gave, gave us this opportunity to create these, these positions.
Vice President Elliott and Commissioner, uh, LeBron?
Yeah, um, it, it brings up something when you mention the name of the person who's
and then also were these, okay, never mind, got that. And then were these previous vacant positions or were they positions that were created in light of what has happened mid-year? Because I, I do kinda wanna know if the, if the need was actually there or if we're just adding additional positions under this grant.
No, again, we're not adding additional positions under the grant. Grant is a valid grant. These, and as far as the locations, do you have that information as to where they're being, okay, established that? But no, these were not just brought up just to bring people on. These were needed positions at these school buildings. And again, as I indicated, these applicants or these individuals were vetted through a interviewing process conducted by Michelle Alberti. And again, because it helped us to adjust our RIF numbers and put people back to work, we felt that this was the right thing to do.
Yeah, no, I get the explanation on getting people back to work, but I just wanted to know if they were vacant positions before the mid-year plans had, had occurred in regards to employment.
To the best of my knowledge, these were grant funded positions that came as a result of us relooking at the grants that were available. And as a result of that, created us, gave, gave us this opportunity to create these, these positions.
Vice President Elliott and Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, it, it brings up something when you mention the name of the person who's making these hires.
Yes.
You know, we had students at our previous, at our last years, we had parents who were placed in the back of the room, all right? So, do we have the right person to make the right decisions on behalf of these people who are in these positions? Because I don't want any of these people putting our parents in the back of the room. And that's what happened at the last student expo.
Got it.
So I have a concern about it.
Okay.
Are these people qualified in order to provide the kind of work for this community school framework?
And, and only thing I can add to that, Vice President Elliott, is that part of the, from an HR perspective, we, we do the job posting.
Yep.
We validate the certifications, we validate the experiences, and the recommendation comes forth from the hiring manager, we proceed with our process. So as far as will they have the impact that you're looking for, and, and, and I can't speak to that, I can just speak to the, the process was followed, it was vetted.
I understand.
And we're presenting it this evening.
I'm sure somebody's listening, they'll take it back.
Commissioner, Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, so I submitted several questions also in advance, but before I go into the questions, I do wanna put it on the record. Again, this is officially my third time requesting that when we have community school site coordinator titles listed in a resolution, that we also list the school in advance.
Okay.
I mean, we do it for teachers and other staff, we know exactly where they're gonna go and be placed at and be working.
Got it.
So I did have to ask, and just for the record, I know Natalie was, Commissioner Shepard was about to ask, so Leadership Academy number 19, Wilson Foundation number 16, and Vanguard were the schools listed. So you just responded here, and so that gave me some additional questions. Are you stating that these are teachers that were laid off that are coming back and being placed in these positions?
No, no.
Or are these ASAR positions?
These are ASAR positions, there's one in here that is a teacher as well, and then, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Harry, they were ASAR that were laid off and are being, being brought back?
These are ASAR positions that some were laid off and being brought back, that is correct, okay? Some also were teachers, okay? And I won't go into the names of those individuals, but some were also teachers that we're providing with an ASAR opportunity which created a vacancy to bring other teachers back.
So I'm gonna...
So it's a combination of, of folks.
So I'm gonna request in the original questions that I sent that you identify privately via email, who was an actual teacher versus an ASAR individual? Because I went back to last month's resolutions, and we had a resolution very similar to this one with other ASAR positions, which I did not vote for. I will not be voting on this one tonight either. However, I do wanna note that one of these individuals you responded is a brand new hire into ASAR. And so that gave me some concerns, just reading this resolution earlier today, which is what prompted me to call staff and then send in a bunch of questions because I, I could not understand why we had this exact resolution on December 19th with five individuals, and here we are with another couple of names and who is what, and these are not names that I recall being on the list from last month, however, it was a long list. So I did not go back and double check the names, I just know that these were different names than from the ones I saw on the original one with the community site coordinators. So I just have some concerns about that. I would like to know though, from these names and individuals, besides the new hire, which out of the other four are then returning teachers?
Okay.
And you can send that via email for privacy reasons, thank you.
Commissioner Shepard, did you have a question? No, no. Okay. Mr. Kennedy, I, I would reiterate what I said early on, and, and I know you and our clerk will communicate that to the superintendent. You're put in a very difficult position. I, I think you've handled the situation pretty admirably, but these are questions that the superintendent or his designees should be around to sort of support you in the answering of them.
Yeah.
The question I have for you, given some of the concerns articulated by my colleagues, is if, if we were, if someone were to make a motion to table this to our next available meeting, what would be the impact on the instructional or support plan if, if we didn't vote on this today? Do you know?
Yeah, I do. I mean, part of it would be that, you know, we're looking to restore and recall teachers from the RIF list.
Yeah.
Okay? And it, it could also impact the disruption in the classroom. So that was the, the reason why we brought them tonight versus waiting until our normally scheduled board meeting, which is I think January 23rd. So again, it was all in mind with not trying to disrespect the board in any type of way.
No, 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 I wasn't...
But it was being done in an effort to minimize the disruption in the classroom so that come, the kids would have a, a teacher that we don't have to keep pulling in, taking out. And again, creating jobs for, for people in, in the district.
But, but these are community school site coordinators, they're not teachers in the classroom.
Well, against, and, and by putting these positions to the board tonight, it helped to create, because some of the individuals were, were teachers that we transitioned into these assignments.
I see.
Creating an opportunity for other teachers to, to be hired.
I get, so domino effect, okay.
Yeah, domino effect, yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you standing in and providing those answers. But again, we need, we need them here.
I understand.
All right, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Malloy?
So, there would be a disruption if we were to not approve this tonight?
Yes, there would be, yes, there would be.
And can you describe what that ripple effect might be?
It, it would be additional teachers remaining on, on the RIF list.
So, how are kids gonna be affected by that? I wanna know that...
It would be, again, a teacher that is in place would have to get another teacher, okay? Will have to backfill and put another teacher in, in the assignment.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shepard?
I'm just confused at how teachers would be impacted if these are ASAR employees?
Yeah, so, in essence, some of the positions that are filling are on, on this here resolution, they were teachers prior to...
Can I just ask?
Well, he hadn't finished answering the question.
Okay. So again, again, if what we tried to do, as I indicated earlier, was to stabilize our community and give people in our community opportunities for jobs, some of the people that are community site coordinators being appointed are currently teachers, okay? And in essence, we now are moving them into the coordinator position, which creates a ripple effect, okay, by, by moving one and then backfilling it with another individual.
How many are teachers on this list?
Um, one, two. Two of them are teachers.
Commissioner LeBron?
That was gonna be my follow-up, was how many are actual teachers? And then again, one of them stated in the response and writing that it was a new hire. So, we have gone through this before, I just wanna say about the impact of the community school site coordinator, and they happen to be even started. We got into a big debate once around a particular individual that was moved into this position temporarily. And I will put this on the record, because Commissioner Elliott supported me on that. I was like, this is crazy. So, long story short, I, I still need to, the effective date is not even till January 10th. So I hear what you're saying, two, two...
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, so these individuals haven't even started yet, or should not be working until tomorrow is the start date. It, it's gonna be a no for me, but I, I just have additional questions. I still would like to know out of this list, who are the two that are teachers? And I would support those two, and the others are gonna be no for me, so I don't know how you guys wanna proceed with that, if that goes into executive session so that we can specifically identify who the teachers are and vote on the other one separately.
Vice President Elliott?
Yeah, I, I think that I would, just to, to give Commissioner LeBron some more information, even if they were teachers, in my view, if they don't qualify based on what we need in our community, then I would have an issue with that. I'm not trying to, you know, necessarily save anybody's job, we've got to make sure that we are prudent with the finances of this district. And so it goes back to my first, my first comments and inquiry about, you know, do these people qualify? Not necessarily just because they got, because I always said, the teachers are anybody. You may be certified, but that doesn't necessarily mean you're qualified to work with, like around children, I don't care who you are. And so even in, that's to my point about the community school model, you know, do these people have the kind of commitment, passion, connection, or can they get that, you know, working with our, you know, are they gonna go on Joseph Avenue, right? Are they gonna go on Conkey Avenue? You know, those are the kinds of concerns that I have, because I'm not interested in just giving people jobs. They got to be able to go on Sio Street, they got to be able to go wherever, they can't be afraid of our community. And that's a concern I have. I don't care who they are.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna keep on going down this way, Commissioner Malloy?
Thank you, I appreciate you asking that.
Commissioner Malloy?
You're welcome, yes, I'm ready.
Just a follow-up question in light of what people have said. So, two of these individuals are teachers, right? So I can understand the ripple effect that would occur by hiring those two individuals back. The other three individuals though, is there a ripple effect if we don't approve them? Is there gonna be a ripple effect because of those individuals not being hired? That's, I think, what I need to know.
So, and again, if you wanna go into executive cabinet, we can have total open honest conversation, but however, I would share that there is one individual who is a diversity of black male that's on here, that is not a teacher today, okay? And it's, without getting into other, yeah, yeah, without getting into other details, it's, it's, I don't really wanna have that open conversation in this forum.
Yeah, we could, but Commissioner Powell?
I'm concerned that we're, that we're looking at this from the wrong angle. These positions are part of the governor's community schools grant. Their, their jobs are not guaranteed beyond the funding of that grant program.
Correct.
In any event, whether they are, whether they are teachers or administrators that have been riffed or not, they're moving into a grant funded position that must be filled because of the considerations of the grant. Again, whether they were riffed or whether they make room for someone who is riffed, they have been interviewed and selected prior to the crisis. And their, their appointment to these positions, these individuals appointed to these positions would have zero impact on either expanding or closing the budget gap.
Correct.
So, in order for me to vote, I, I, and there's some information that might sway me one way or another, I think I'd like to go into executive session in reference to, to this one, and then we come back, you know, for my vote.
Sure. The, the only challenge I have about that is you, oops, you could provide some additional information to us. Do you think you could provide some additional information to us that would clarify some of this stuff?
Yes, I do, and we have the level of detail.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we try that? If push comes to shove and we can't get the clarity we need, Madam Clerk, when's our next board meeting date? On the 23rd? Yeah, when's the next committee meeting? Tuesday. So if push comes to shove and we don't get the clarity, let's say no one is available or you can't provide additional clarity, we'll put this, someone will make a motion to table, and we'll, we'll see if we can resolve it that way.
Okay.
Commissioner Adams?
So, that's what I was hoping, that we could do it today before my vote, because I won't be here Tuesday, I'll be in Albany.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, let's see what we can accomplish in executive session. So, we won't move on 583, I'll, I'll seek a motion to go into executive session later on this evening, all right? So there'll be no further comments about 583 at this time. Can I get a motion to move Resolution 586?
Someone?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner LeBron. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 586?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So I also submitted this question in writing, just because the effective date for this individual says January 27th. However, this individual was moved tentatively November 12th into that position, and I see now that it was a tentative move onto Monroe County Commission provisional appointment at the approval. However, I thought, it was my understanding, and so I just need clarity around this, that when we move people in the district, even temporarily as an appointment, it comes through a resolution, and then once that person is there permanently, that also comes through a resolution.
And the response that, the response that we provided to you is that it has to be vetted by Monroe County Civil Service Commission. We did not get that approval until December 30th. So in essence, we brought it to board this evening, right? So again, this is just a title change, it's not, it's not a new hire, there's no salary change.
Yep, and then I got that. I know it's kind of just a lateral per individual, but, but then the effective date is not really January 27th.
Well, and, and again, it can be, right? I mean, we, we could modify this if the board is okay with this to make it January 10th, right? We were originally put him on the board, Doc, because that's the date of our next HCI process or the board meeting that was supposed to take place and later in January. So in essence, we could, we left the date January 27th, okay? But if we, if we wanted to amend this and we go into executive session as well, we can make this effective date tomorrow, okay?
I, I would like to, if possible, make it the effective date that individual had been working in that, in this position in that department. And then that just brings up additional questions, because again, I thought that even if it's a temporary appointment, there still has to be a resolution brought to the board before there's a, and then a permanent one brought forth.
That's not to...
I've seen temporary resolutions.
Well, again, and we could process that, but that's not to my knowledge. We cannot, until that person qualifies for that job title and that comes through Monroe County, the, the Monroe County Commission's office, that's why we did not move to...
Well, no, I understand that it has to be approved through civil service.
Yes.
But they hadn't approved it and we moved him. So that's, that's, that's where my confusion is too. I know that we, we're not supposed to until it's approved by them, saying that the job title is adequate and so forth, and they've done their due process.
Right.
But we did move him.
We moved him out of title.
He started in November.
Yeah, we moved him out of title, knowing that he was being submitted and being reviewed, and that's why we did not bring it to the board until the, the, the county office approved it.
Did we do a resolution for our title pay?
It's, it's not, it's not a pay change, it's not anything other than a title change, that's all that it is.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 586?
No, but I would like to amend the date of, and I don't know how that's, how we do that, but I would like to amend the effective date.
And I would just have to confer with counsel, okay, from a civil service standpoint, if that's something that we can do.
If the civil service approved it on 12/30/19, that's the date I would like to, if possible, use, because that's the date that civil service approved it.
12/30/19.
12, 12, December...
They may have acted on 12/30/19 on a resolution that was supposed to be effective in January 27th, so I don't know what was represented to the civil service people when they approved. They just took their action on the 30th. It may not have been effective until the date that was in there.
Today, yeah. And then what would be the effect of paying that individual, if it's effective?
There's no pay, there's no pay change.
Pay change.
If there were a pay change, it would be effective.
There's no pay change.
So we don't, at this particular time, we don't know whether the commission said effective?
So, is, well, I would like to then table it until we have a more accurate, effective date. And, you know, I feel like this should be a little bit concerning, because yes, in this circumstance, this is a lateral move, no pay change, but what if there were a pay change? We should have this already a process so that we're not in a situation where if this was a pay change, we could be potentially either owing someone or shorting them or overpaying. Like, I, I don't know these things, because this process seems a little bit not clear to me. And so, if we need to hold off and just table it until Tuesday, I'm okay with that, we have finance on Tuesday. But I wanted to, the effective date and these... Um, but I wanted to, the effective date and these resolutions and this information to be as accurate as possible.
Okay.
That's all.
So, so let me ask you, is there, Mr. Kennedy, is there a difference in the effective date being? What would be the difference? What would be the impact of the effective date being back in December versus January?
Uh, off the top of my head, President White, I don't think there, there would be a problem, okay? But again, I would just have to consult with the civil service law and making sure that, that that's not an issue. I, I don't see it to be an issue, okay? Um, but again, I just would like to consult with civil service and council just to make sure that we're not doing anything that's adverse to the civil service law, that's all.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Harry, I heard you say that this was intended to be on the agenda.
Yep.
For January 27.
Or the 23rd board meeting, effective the following Monday.
I don't understand why it was moved to this one. It should, it didn't, doesn't appear to have had the urgency that the others did.
No, it doesn't.
Given the confusion of this conversation, I motion to table.
All right. We table it to the 20...
To the 27th, to our regular scheduled January business meeting.
And I can have the answer...
Madam Cork, what is that, the 27th?
23rd, I believe it is. And then the, the following Monday is the 27th. Then I can have the answer to you, commit, or to the, to all of you as far as moving that date back to, um, December 30th, when the commission approved.
Do we need a second on that?
Uh, yeah, there's been a motion to table made by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Yes, a second.
Seconded by Commissioner Malloy. A motion to table goes directly to a vote. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 586 to January 23rd, 2020, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No, for me.
What's that?
I said no, because I didn't request it for it to go to the 23rd. I requested it to go to Tuesday. And if we do it on the 23rd, um, then the effective date of 12/30 makes it look like we're, now we're going back versus moving forward, so.
Okay, all right. Uh, the matter's been adjourned, uh, tabled until, um, January 23rd. And we'll consider it with additional information from Mr. Kennedy and the superintendent at that time. All right, so let's move on to Resolution 588. Can I get a motion to discuss Resolution 588?
Some.
And moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 588? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 588, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, any nays? Next need a motion to discuss Resolution 589.
Some.
And moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by?
Seconded.
Mr. Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 589? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 589, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, let's get a motion to discuss Resolution 591. Is there a motion? Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner LeBron. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 591? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 591, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Is there a motion to discuss Resolution 593?
Some.
And moved by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 593? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 593, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Can someone make a motion to discuss Resolution 595?
Some.
Moved by Commissioner LeBron, is there a second?
Seconded.
Uh, seconded by Commissioner Malloy. So any questions or comments regarding Resolution 595? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 595, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, how about Resolution 596? Is there a resolution, uh, motion?
Some.
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 596? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 596, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And one more time, I need a resolution to discuss resolution, I need a motion to discuss Resolution 597.
Motion.
And moved by Commissioner LeBron, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Malloy. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 597? Commissioner Vice President Elliott?
Um, the, the language under that, um, that they would be placed on a preferred eligibility list, so that means that this person is being downsized?
The, the job's being abolished, yes. And they, they have rights to, to come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 597? There being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 597, say aye. Aye? Any opposition? And we've got some other resolutions to consider. I need a motion to discuss Resolution 600.
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron, uh, and the seconded by Commissioner Powell. Uh, any questions or comments regarding Resolution 600?
Yes.
And there is a question by Commissioner LeBron?
Yes. I know, I just like, hey, come on. So just really quickly, and let me just explain. I may need to just come also schedule a meeting with you, Paul, just to kind of grasp my head around how these resolutions come forth through Oasis. I totally support Oasis, I get the work that you guys do there. Um, but when I saw 600 and 601, I'm gonna combine them, um, I recalled that we had two similar resolutions, um, not that long ago, also for Career Start. And I do get what Career Start does. Um, they also have contracts with the county and work with their population as well to do job placement and coaching and so forth. Um, but I was confused as to why we would have four resolutions in a short amount of time. Um, yeah, for essentially the same thing, training, case management services and so forth.
If I may?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'll address Resolution 600 and 601 a little bit separately. 600 is for case management. That is meant to be a replacement to the contract that expired on December 31st. You are correct that that resolution was, that original contract was not ratified by board resolution until October. And the reason why that was, was there was some discussion in the district about the, the appropriate procurement process being used. And we were then directed to do a full RFP process, um, which was not completed until November. So this resolution, again, is, um, to replace the one that was basically temporary until December 31st. And this continues for the remainder of the school year.
Clarification.
And that's, again, for case management. The second Resolution 601 is for employment placement and employment transition support for our students. You're, you're again correct. Uh, last month, the board approved a resolution for a very similar contract. As a matter of fact, it's exactly the same with one notable exception. The contract last month was only for a subset of our students, only for refugees. And we feel that these services should be available to all of our students. The reason why the prior resolution was, uh, limited to refugees was because of the grant funding source was limited to serve only refugee demographics.
Okay, thank you so much.
This contract is meant to serve all students.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd?
Um, so I just want to clarify on that. The 500 participants listed in this resolution is in addition to the amount from last, uh, last month.
Correct, correct. That would then represent our entire student body between the prior contract, 500, and this 500.
Vice President Elliott?
So can you explain the budget codes? And what am I looking at here? Because if you're asking for, I think you're asking for 117.5 in total for, I believe, both of those, um, resolutions, if I'm correct. So, to, explain the budget codes to me. Can you do that or do I?
I, I can. Um, the total amount, your, your, your quick math was very good, uh, off by one, one place. I had to actually do this math while I was prepping to come up here. It's 107,500 in total across the two contracts. The first contract being 62,500 and the second contract being $55,000.
So there are two?
The, the other columns, if you go all the way to the left-hand column where it says, uh, budget code with a account code 5430 at the very beginning. I hope you can stay with me on this, it is confusing. But that 25,000 in, for both contracts in that column represents the amount of a contract or a grant that the district can charge indirect against. So it's charged to an account code 5430. That means that the district can charge that grant, uh, the indirect fees, um, that are allowable by law and that the district actually can use that money to offset costs in processing payments, et cetera. That's what indirect is used for. And then the second column, starting with account code 5431, is the remainder balance above the 25,000 to reach the third column total of 62,500 and 55,000.
All right, so the certi, the certified budget line balance, explain those that are different between the... So this is, the certified budget line balance is what's remaining within those budget, um, line items?
The certified budget line balance was something that was asked for recently by the Board of Education. And the way it was submitted, at least my understanding of it, is that on the day that this resolution moves forward, what are the balances currently in those budget lines? So you'll see that in account code 5430, it has a balance of 94,500 as of the day that this was submitted. And we are asking for a contract total from that account code of 50,000. So there's ample money in that line to cover that cost. And if you go over to the next column of, of account code 5431, the date that this was submitted, there is a balance in that account line of 213,715. And we are asking for a contract expenditure of 67,500. So there's ample money in that line to, to pay for these expenses.
Well, I wasn't necessarily arguing about that. I just wanted to understand the difference in the budget codes. So let me get back to, um, the, the comments that you made because I didn't, um, uh, I didn't know about this. So the, the one that's under the budget code 5430, this is like administrative costs for the district?
I'm not an accountant, but I will attend to answer this. I hope I'm being clear and correct. My understanding is that the district has the right on any...
Granted.
Grant-funded contract to charge the grant an additional administrative fee for an indirect cost, but only on the first 25,000. And that's that first code of 5430. And then the remainder cannot be charged indirect by the district.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, so just, actually, for clarification, I think that's most, my experience with most grants and non-for-profit, there is always an administrative fee. Um, if an organization is absorbing that grant and they have to provide some additional supervision to an individual or supplies or an office space, that's usually charged as an administrative fee, that's all included. Um, but I do want to just talk about these budget codes because, um, although I know we requested these and I support that we have an understanding of what was in the line and what the balance was, um, I have mentioned this before, that these budget codes at this granular level doesn't mean anything to us. And, um, thank you for trying to explain a process that we kind of asked for, but we have not flushed out all the way through. Um, because these budget codes don't tell us which actual lines they're coming from and what area of the district or department. So I'm going to be, um, I am meeting with board staff on Friday. Um, and in the finance committee, I do want to take a look at how we communicate this a little bit more clear, not only for my colleagues but for the community. So if anybody picks this up, they can understand exactly where in our budget this is being, is coming out of versus all of these numbers that we don't ever look at. So thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Um, again, we are on Resolution 600. Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 600? Don't go too far in que, although I think you've already answered some of the questions about 601. Any other questions or comments regarding Resolution 600? Nope, there being no further questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolution 600, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? The ayes have it, Mr. Burke. Um, I need a motion to discuss Resolution 601. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I heard a couple people say second. Commissioner LeBron, seconded. Any questions or comments regarding Resolution 601? I think you've answered the questions already, Mr. Burke. Um, all those in favor of Resolution 601, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The ayes have it. Um, we do have a long-term suspension that we have to discuss in executive session. We also have to discuss, um, Resolution 583 as well. Um, but before we, before I get that motion, I noticed, no, no, I noticed that there's Resolution 560, which wasn't on our, my cheat sheet on our agenda, but, um... Has anything changed with respect to that? Or there's still work, still need to be done on that?
Yes, and so I was gonna ask that we, I was gonna put a motion forth if we could table till the actual next RCSD district board meeting, which is January 23rd.
That's fine. Okay, so there's a motion to table resolution, uh, well, let's bring it back off the table. I need a motion to bring it off the table. Commissioner Shepherd, uh, made the motions, is there a second? Bring, uh, the resolution off the table?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Uh, all those in favor of taking, uh, Resolution 560 off the table, say aye. Aye? Any opposition? I need a motion to table Resolution 560 to January 23rd. Uh, is a date certain? All those in favor of tabling Resolution, um, 560 to January 23rd? Yes?
Motion.
Yes?
Yeah, I did a motion, Mr. Adams.
Seconded.
Right? Yep. Uh, all those in favor of tabling Resolution 560 to Janu, bless you, January 23rd, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, it's been so tabled. And, uh, we'll get some additional information to make sure that, that those numbers are reported correctly. All right, um, I, just before I get that motion to go into executive session, I just wanted you to know for your calendars that, uh, both of our superintendents will be out of town on February 13th, 2020, uh, which will occasion us to have to adjourn that meeting, shuffle things around. Um, thanks to the work of our staff, talking to our superintendents. We're combining, uh, January 27th. There'll be resolutions from the EPO and, uh, the Rochester School District will appear on the January 27th, 2002, oh, February, that was January 27th. Uh, it was February? February 13th, that's what I said. The, I thought we were adjourning it to January 27th. Is that not right? It, what is it, February 27th? Oh, that, that's a note that I took. I'm sorry, I must have written on the wrong, wrong date. So, just to be clear, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Um, both of our superintendents will be out of town on February 13th, 2020.
Okay.
And, uh, because of that, we're, we're com... There'll be no meeting.
Okay.
Um, and so we will be combining the resolutions for the EPO and the Rochester School District on February 27th, 2020. Is that right? So, and, and, and notices will be sent out. And the community will, you know, be made aware of that as well.
So can I just, um, add to the February 27th date? Because I gave board staff the dates I'm gonna be out for my fellowship. And I believe that February 27th is when I will be out of town myself. So I just want to throw that on the record now.
I'm gonna make sure I talk about budget on the 27th then.
She didn't hear what she said?
Yeah, but don't bring your budget down. Now, I'm, we, we're gonna try to figure out how to zoom in.
You're gonna zoom in.
I will be paying attention and I read my materials.
I also wanted to note that Superintendent Nelz will be making a presentation on January 25th, 2000. I, I wrote these down right in front of me. Uh, but I guess I wrote them down wrong. And you, you should have, you should have, absolutely should have. So February 25th, is that right? 2020.
I'll be here for that.
He's gonna be making a presentation. Just want you all to know that.
I'll be here for that presentation.
Vice President Elliott? All this stuff will be put in writing, so everybody will be...
All right.
Uh, Mr. President, thank you for giving me this point of personal privilege. Uh, I don't know if maybe some of our staff have heard the passing of a former principal in our school district, Clinton Strickland, uh, who passed away. And so I just want, uh, this board to acknowledge his passing. I know he had been sick. And, and, um, I know that Cicely Strickland, uh, who's the, uh, chief operating officer for the United Way has taken off some time. She and I were supposed to be having, uh, well, we're still scheduled for the end of the month. But just want to send our condolences, uh, to the family on that loss. I didn't know him when he was a principal in the district. I didn't know him when he was a principal in the district, some people may know, knew of his work, I know he was at School 29, and I'm told he was also at one point at Edison, and so, just on behalf of this board and Vice President, President White, that we extend our condolences on behalf of the family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need that motion to go into executive session for two-
Sam, very quickly, before you guys do the motion, I just very quickly point a personal privilege, and I just want to put this on the radar and not have a full discussion, huh? And not have a full discussion about it tonight, however, I do want Terry and the administration and the board to have a conversation about how incidences are being communicated back to the board that are occurring at the school, at the school level. We've gone back and forth with previous superintendents around incident emails, we've gone from weekly emails listing all the number of incidences, individual incidences, but I really hate finding out disturbing incidences through the media, so I would like that as a formal conversation around board communication with administration around school incidences.
Commissioner Powell?
As we convene into executive session, I have a question for legal counsel that I'd like to add to the agenda, that I want the whole board to hear the question and answer, if that's possible.
Well, we can, we can do that in a confidential session with our attorney, so.
Yes.
I just want to wish the Brothers in Five, the Single Fraternity Incorporated, happy Fronter's Day, 106 years of excellence. Blue Fly.
That's why you're wearing blue?
That's right. You know.
I, I'm sorry, colleagues, there is one other bit of business. Carl, our general counsel, has to give us a report on the SRO contract, is that right, Carl?
Yes.
No, no, it's you.
Good evening, commissioners, this will be relatively brief. At the very last document in your packet is, is a one-page, short memo, in which I attempt to summarize the provisions of a new commissioner's regulation concerning SRO contracts. I mentioned many of these elements when I last spoke to the board concerning it, so the one that I would like to focus on this evening is the one that's number two at the top, which is how we're going to go about developing input from parents, students, school administrators, teachers, unions, parent and student organizations, community probation officers, prosecutors, defense counsel, and courts, that are familiar with student discipline with respect to the pending SRO contract. At the bottom of the page, you'll see that we have a two-step recommendation that I would suggest that the board consider. The first step would be to place a notice of a March hearing on our website, and the district clerk is coordinating an appropriate date for that, and attaching to that notice a copy of the current SRO contract, so people reading the notice will have a good idea of what we're talking about. And then, secondly, sending a copy of that notice to each of these constituent groups that are listed in paragraph two, and we want to give those constituent groups two options. One, they can comment through a portal, which we'll create on the website, so they can comment electronically, in the event that it's inconvenient for them to come to a hearing, or they can both comment electronically if they wish, and also come to the hearing and have the opportunity to speak to the board with respect to the SRO contract. So, that's the process that I'm suggesting be followed, in order for us to comply with the requirement that we develop this SRO contract with additional input than what we have previously enjoyed.
Any questions for Carl?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that. You took over the meeting.
Yeah, Commissioner Shepherd?
So, two things. The hearing would be for a future contract, or the-
It would be for the contract that is currently under negotiation.
Okay. And then, the second thing is, the current contract is a public document?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I have requested through the clerk to receive a copy of that.
By all means.
It's gonna go on our website, too, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So my only request now is that this March hearing not be done in conjunction with a board meeting, that it is done either on a Saturday or on a weekday dedicated specifically for this hearing, so that we can actually have families there, and community members to provide input around this, and not be rushed to end a forum as critical as this, and then have a board business meeting. So, that's my request, I want to put it out there on the record now, either a Saturday or an evening dedicated specifically to this hearing, that allows ample time for input from all, all the people listed.
I, I think that's a reasonable request, and Madam Clerk, can you just see if we can find some date on which to make that happen, and obviously, you'll work with the general counsel. Any other questions or comments regarding Mr. Kristoff's presentation? No? Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in a second, in a minute.
Yes, sir.
I need a motion, before you go make the motion, let me complete what I need to say first. I need to, a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing a student, student disciplinary matter. Additionally, we need to go into executive session to discuss the terms and conditions of, of certain individuals' employment, specifically Resolution 583, and then, we also apparently need the opportunity to have a confidential conversation with our attorney, as requested by Commissioner Powell. Do I have that motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Malloy, did I hear you say a motion? Commissioner Powell, all those in favor, say aye. For the few of you in this room that might be interested in seeing what happens after our executive session, we are going to reconvene on the second floor, and probably adjourn from there as well. So, good night, everybody.